Seaheads, good. I'll call the meeting to order. Is there any declaration of interest? And notice we have interests now, that's good. We had pecuniary on the council agenda, but on this one we have interests, which is correct. Any declaration of interest, Councilor Mill? Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I will be declaring a pecuniary interest on the report P D R C W dash sixteen dash two zero, which is in the consent agenda. Because I have a spouse or a sibling who is involved with that project.
Thank you, that's duly noted. Any others? Then we'll move forward. We have two delegations. First, we have Michael Ryan, Hugh Simpson, from the County Gray Federation of Agriculture, regarding farmland tax rate. Are they here?
Yes.
Yeah, I do see them. Come forward, please. Welcome, and thank you for attending even with the weather being the way it is.
How's that? Thanks for having us. My name is Hugh Simpson. I'm the president of the Gray County Federation of Agriculture. And just before I turn it to my colleague, Mike Ryan, who's one of the directors on our board, I wanted to say a few words. Thanks again for having us, to council and to staff. Many of you have heard from us over the last several weeks. We've been trying to visit the municipalities and having a conversation about this. Gray County farming, our organization represents about 2,000 farmers in the area, over half a million acres of agriculture, and about $400 million in gross domestic product contribution to the Gray County area. So it's a, we think, a material contributor. We've got lots of young farmers coming into farming in our area, more frankly than anywhere else, on a trend line than anywhere in Ontario, in Canada in fact. And I'm going to turn it to Mike now, who's been ably managing this property, farm property tax file for a number of years. But I just wanted to leave before he starts with one message. And that is, we're not here today asking for a reduction of property tax for farmers. We are, in fact, going to be paying more tax because values have gone up. What essentially we're asking for you to be thinking about today is keeping the burden in the farm sector the same as it has been historically, at 3%. So the farmer will pay more tax, but the burden in the farm sector, we're asking for it to remain the same. So Mike has a depth of knowledge on this subject, and I'm going to turn it to him for the balance of time. Thanks, Mike.
After watching you guys fight with these microphones so much, hopefully I don't have the same. For brevity and through time, I'm going to move through this presentation fairly quickly. Most of you have seen it. Meaford was the only council that I wasn't able to attend, and Hugh went on my behalf. As we've discussed in the past, over the past valuations cycle, farmland in Gray County has gone up by 71%. Let me get there. Where the residential tax base has only gone up by 5%. And since MPAC has been implemented, farmland in Gray County has bounced around, residential rates have bounced around. And due to MPAC, the way that municipalities set tax ratios is all setting the residential rate. So as long as residential moves with agriculture, moves with commercial, moves with industrial, the ratios are applicable and current and relevant. But what's happened in this last assessment cycle is that agricultural land has shot up in value, and residential has not moved. And I think it's important to, we have issues with tax burden in the Blue Mountains, and we saw at the last meeting, the CEO talk about, very passionately about this being a democracy and the share of the tax burden. But we're talking about an entire tax shift. We have our own Blue Mountains in the farmland tax class. It's in Southgate. And it's, when I was at Georgian Bluffs, I was, there weren't many questions that made the recording, but afterwards, there were two councillors that came up and talked, and one of them shared that his tax bill went up by 130%. So when we talk 71%, we're talking about an entire tax class. We're not, we're not three people coming here and saying that we have waterfront property that's gone up massively compared to the rest of the municipality. We're talking about an entire tax class, and what we're asking for is that that tax class be recognized, and that the increase that we're paying is proportional to the services that we're receiving, but also is a realistic increase. We talk about 71% increase over the last four years because of this assessment cycle. That doesn't take into account the previous assessment cycle. So over the last eight years, farmland has doubled on average in Gray County. I shared at a lot of municipalities about a member we had on our board, they were seeing his taxes go from 4,800 to over $10,000. And these are real and significant stories. There's a few of you that I shared with, that there's a Deloitte report out that studied local food in Waterloo County, that the Ontario Ministry was using for the Local Food Act. And they were able to attribute it, four jobs in Waterloo County directly related to one on-farm job. So whether that's an equipment dealer, whether that's a service dealership, an electrician, there's lots of service industries around. We talk about one, the five jobs for every graduate out of a degree program or diploma program in agriculture. There's lots of opportunity, there's lots of economic impact outside of the direct primary farm. And I think over, over the last years that I've been on the Federation, I've been very presenting an optimistic and an upbeat in the opportunities that are in agriculture. And we love taking politicians and people out to our farms and showing them the technology advances. You see the shiny equipment that's required to run a modern operation. But that doesn't speak to the bottom line. That if you look at cash receipts on farms over the last five years, they're decreasing. Farm income is decreasing as commodity prices are going down. We play in an international market. Every morning when a farmer wakes up in the winter that's in the cash crop industry, they're checking what soybeans are worth. And what's moving soybean prices this time of year is rain in South America. And they don't care what our tax bill or what our costs here are in Canada, in Ontario, or in Gray County. And the health of agriculture in Gray County, those four jobs that are related to every on-farm job, that money that is, that's going towards a doubling in the tax rate is being taken out of the local economy. JFK always had the quote that farmers are the only member of society, only industry in society that pay retail, sell wholesale, and pay the freight both ways. It's not a high-margin game, it's a very low-margin game. And people do it because they're passionate about it. You talk to farmers and they'll tell you how many generations their family farm has been there. And if you ask their siblings, especially the baby boomers, whether they trade places with the person that's on the farm, most of them would say no. That they deserve every rise in, that rise in wealth, as some have described it as, is not realized by the person that's on the farm. To sell the farm to realize that wealth is seen as a business failure to most families. And if we want to see a continued growth in that young farmer population in Gray County, that is directly related to the cash flow and the cost that farm operation can sustain. So if farm taxes are doubling, that's money that that young producer can't use to build an operation and be sustainable. Most of the farms in Gray County, that wealth that some have described in that farmland, it was paid for by an off-farm job. The average farmer in Canada feeds about 150 families, but most, the average farmer also works off the farm to feed his own. And I think that that's something that's lost, that as I toured municipalities, there were a few comments about how one councillor was as bold to say there'd be no sympathy because your farmers are a lot wealthier. But you can't eat equity. And cash flow is what keeps these businesses going, which is a yearly cost, which is what farm taxes are. And at the end of the day, municipal taxes are about providing services. And so if we say over the last eight years, farmland has doubled in value, we've seen no change in the tax ratio, so therefore farm property taxes have doubled in value, has there been a corresponding rise in services to bare agricultural land? And there has been some. The province has downloaded services onto the county, onto local municipalities, that traditionally they haven't had, that was funded by UMPF. And UMPF came in when MPAC came in to replace the farm tax rebate program. But the farm rebate tax program was basically an interest-free float, that farmers would pay the municipality 100%, and the province would send a cheque to the municipality six months later or whenever. And the farmer received no interest on that money. But, and it was, when it was implemented in 1980, or late 70s, early 80s, it was about, it was a temporary measure until they could figure out what to do. And it stayed around till 1998. And the 0.25 maximum tax ratio comes out of that. I think it's something that's stuck in a lot of municipalities' heads. But we've seen this share in the reduction of UMPF being blamed on agricultural land not being taxed at the full residential rate. And I think it, when you look at pre-MPAC, pre-amalgamation, whether it be Egremont or whether it be Glenelg, where I'm from, there were no urban municipalities there, no urban tax base. We had Markdale, which at one time had the highest industrial assessment of any city or town settlement area municipality in the country. They had many factories, but they had very few residents. They lived in Glenelg, they lived in the rural municipalities, but it had no tax base to support those services. And I think what we're asking for is just a recognition that Owen Sound will say that they had to drop their industrial and commercial rates because they were too high. Well, bare agricultural land is the industrial and the commercial impact and driver in rural municipalities. And I think that that same, that same discussion about sustainable tax increases needs to be had inside tax classes as it is in the front page of the paper when they advertise what the residential rate has gone on. That if we've seen farm property tax rates double in value, that they have doubled, and the municipality needs 2% increase due to budgetary concerns. But the front page of the headline is that the residential taxpayer is only going to see an increase of 1.5. And so we're not shifting burden back on the residential taxpayer. This is burden that the residential taxpayer would have to pay for the rise in services. But due to the rapid increase in assessment, your treasurer and your financial department has made an assumption based on what the tax rate was last year. And it's, some councillors would like to say that this is a provincial issue. But it's not a provincial issue. You have the power inside the municipality to set it anywhere between 0 and 0.25 as the measure of fairness. And each municipality is different. If the province came back and said that you had to set it at 15%, well, that might work for the GTA, where residential assessment has risen as quickly as agricultural. But the reverse is not, is not true. It's, it needs to be a local solution. And I think with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Michael. And Hugh, council, are there any questions? I see none, I want to, oh, Councilor Mackey.
Thanks, Deputy Warden. Thanks for the presentation. What would the percentage be that the Federation of Agriculture would be recommending that the council look at?
And it almost begins. Over the past 20 years, traditionally agricultural land is paid between 2 and 3% of Gray County's budget. And what we're asking for is that 3% be the maximum threshold. I think the next MPAC assessment cycle will see another rapid increase in Gray County. We have seen farmland values level off across Ontario since this assessment cycle came out, but Gray County seems to be still catching up rapidly to the surrounding municipalities. That in southwestern Ontario, we've seen rates go back to that 7% to 9% increase in farmland every year, which would bring it more in line with residential increases as well. But Gray County is still playing catch-up with land values in farmland. And it's not our intention to come back every year. What we're asking for is that 3% burden of the overall budget is proportional over the last 20 years what we've paid for services on bare agricultural land. And we would say that that historic high would be a sustainable increase for farmers. They're still going to be writing a bigger cheque than they were before this assessment cycle, but isn't a doubling in taxes in five years, which I don't think any taxpayer would find sustainable.
If I may, Mike, can we just move to the screen that shows what the other municipalities have done? To, I want to make sure that we get your question answered. So this is an indication of what some of the other municipalities have done after hearing a similar kind of presentation. To get to the number that Mike's talking about, where we are 3% of the burden, the recommendation is that we're at 0.24 currently of the residential tax rate, that we would go to 0.186, I think it is.
No.
Is it 0.186?
Point.
0.153. So I think that may be, to your question, the specific number that we're making a recommendation for.
Councilor Mackey.
So can we just have the other screen with the other neighbouring municipalities or counties? So one point, that would be significantly lower than the majority of the other counties, surrounding counties, correct? What your ask is?
Our ask would be... Our ask is a unique ask to Gray County. I think when you look at those other municipalities, traditionally Chatham Kent was the only agricultural land, major agricultural land base that had a lower tax rate than 0.25 when MPAC came out. And every, every county federation when this came out was provided with an analysis by the provincial organisation, if they asked for it. What has the historic tax ratio been? So our ratio is unique, just like Bruce County's is unique. In Bruce County, agricultural land traditionally over the last 20 years is paid 6% of their county budget. We've seen higher-value land, larger operations in that, in Lower Bruce County, that have, that each county is unique where the ratio should be on the traditional tax burden that bare agricultural land has carried.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilor Robinson.
Again, thank you, Mike and Hugh, for the presentation. It was very professional and very worthwhile. Two things, I wonder if we could just go back to what the request is from the Federation? And also, Hugh, I was wondering if you wouldn't mind going through the statistics again, like you did at the beginning of the presentation, for the number of member, member farmers and the acreage and just the dollar figure. It would be most, most helpful.
I'd be happy to do that. Thanks for your question.
Yep.
Thanks for the question, happy to do that. So what we are talking about is about 2,000 farms. There are more than that, not all of them are members of the Federation of, the Ontario Federation of Agriculture, and we represent the Ontario Federation of Agriculture on a regional county basis. So there are more farms than that. It's in the neighbourhood of a half a million acres. And then the gross domestic product contribution is over $350 million to the Gray County area. And this kind of leaks into the stat that Mike shared with you about four jobs for every one on-farm job and so on. And the reason that we bring those statistics forward is just to put a placeholder around the materiality, and I think really the opportunity as it relates to the farm sector. The one other thing that you didn't ask specifically about, that I'd like to mention though, is that Gray County does have a unique trend line around young farmers. And that is the growth of younger farmers coming on farm to make their living as farmers is a greater, I think by double than it is generally across the country and certainly in Ontario. So that's a, that's an optimistic, I think, trend line.
Are you finished, Councilor Robinson?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Well, thank you very much, gentlemen, for the presentation. And I think we can all agree that our farms are important to us. Okay. Council Robinson?
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Just through you, for the conclusion of this delegation, I think it'd be helpful just to advise that our treasurer would be preparing a report for county council, and I believe it's going to be on one of the March agenda items. And I'm wondering if this presentation could also be factored into the report that would be coming forward with specifics to the request that's coming from the Federation.
Kevin, anything to add to that?
Yes, it's a requirement of the upper tier every year to set tax policy, so there will be a report coming. I'm planning for the second meeting in March, if I can get it done within. And we have planned a meeting for tomorrow with the local treasurers to go over tax policy as well, so that's, it's on the works. So it'll be, it'll be forthcoming, yes.
Okay, so we are moving on. We have a second delegation, however, council, I should advise you that our guests were not able to make it due to the weather. So Brian will be addressing that information during his presentation later in the agenda. Okay, so we're moving on now to the consent agenda. Is there anything that requires a separate discussion? Item five, Councilor Mill has left her seat due to his declaration. Seeing none, then could I get a mover then for us to approve those items? Moved by Councilor Clumpus, seconded by Councilor Patterson. All those in favour, any opposed? That is carried, thank you very much. Okay. Item 6A, and the bus lease. I'll get a mover, please. Councilor Burnley moves, seconded by Councilor Mackey. Who is going to have the floor here? Stephanie? Hi, Staff. Good morning.
Morning, council. Thank you for having me here today. I do want to start off by thanking you for allowing the last-minute addition to the agenda. I know it came very last minute, and I do apologize for that. However, the reason for the last-minute addition is to address the fact that these buses that we are looking to lease will be new buses, and they will take 90 to 120 days to be prepared and ready to go. So we wanted to start that ticker tape and the countdown as soon as we possibly could, so that's the reason we wanted to have it in front of you today. So thank you. So the recommendation for you today is to lease six buses that are fully accessible to Overland Custom Coach for approximately $15,234 a month excluding taxes, that the monthly lease cost be funded from the provincial grant, and that council give staff permission to pass the bylaw at a future date. On January the 28th, we posted and negotiated RFP for these buses. We sought six accessible leased vehicles, two of them to operate along Highway 10, two to operate along Highway 26, one to operate along Highway 6, and an additional vehicle to act as the spare. We used the following evaluation criteria to evaluate each of our bids. The company profile and facility details reviewed all of the company's information. It gave us a good insight into the scope and the capabilities of each company. We asked questions along the lines of how many bays, how many staff, what admin support did they have, just so we could get a full understanding of exactly what their company would be able to provide to us, and what we'd be agreeing to. Vehicle descriptions went into an in-depth question by question, asking what each vehicle had. We asked what the kind of driver's seat would be, what the seats would be for the riders, what, if there was air conditioning, if there wasn't. Every possible question was asked in that vehicle description. We asked for leasing services references, so I have contacted the references of the suggested award winner. And we also received a proposed lease agreement from each bidder as well. And the bid table provided us with a breakdown of the monthly lease costs, including how many kilometres would be included in the lease. There was a few of us who evaluated these, Kim, myself, Mike Elguire, and Stephen Dollimer. And we also engaged First Student, which we felt was very important, because they will be the ones who will be servicing the vehicles, and we wanted to make sure that we were signing up for vehicles that they felt were adequate and that they would be able to maintain. We received three submissions, one from DeMara, which is also known as Mississauga Bus, Overland Custom Coach, and City View Bus as well. After reviewing all of these, we feel, staff feel, that the project should go to Overland Custom Coach, as they were the lowest bid per cost per bus, and also provided us with the greatest opportunities. The buses will be new, so that means that they will be more reliable and cheaper to maintain. It will reduce any breakdown costs or lag times for delivery of service. And all of the vehicles will be identical, which will really help maintenance staff, but also it creates a nice image for the community, because all the vehicles will look the same. And no matter where you ride in Gray County or outside of Gray County, you know what you're getting on. Just a brief overview of Overland Custom Coach. So they have been in business for 38 years, and they've been awarded in excess of 10 top dealer awards. In addition to that, Overland Custom Coach is a partner with the Metrolinks Transit Procurement Initiative, and they are currently supplying six transit agencies with vehicles across Ontario. The lease terms, so we, will be a closed lease, 36 months through RBC. The cost of each bus, if we were to buy them outright, would be 102,000. The two options presented to you today are one lease at 20% residual, or a second option is a residual of $1, with different monthly lease costs. So First Student will conduct preventative maintenance and repairs, and they'll be charged to the warranty. And Overland Custom Coach, in addition to that, also has a warranty that will be provided with each bus. Some additional aftermarket features would be bike racks, which we will seek sponsorship for those bike racks from our neighbouring municipalities or some businesses and different community groups. Fair boxes to collect the cash or the payments on the bus, two-way radios to stay in communication with the drivers and the buses, and cameras are additional feature as well. Staff are currently recommending, which will come in a future report to you, the purchase of bike racks through sponsorship, and we will be recommending two-way radios and fair boxes as well. This is a sample of what the bus would look like. It will be wrapped, obviously these are just white buses right now, but they will be wrapped with the logo and fully branded, in addition with the provincial logo as well. This is just another view. Unless we could be what the inside of the bus would look like. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Stephanie, for that report. I'm just wondering, the fare boxes, you mentioned cash, will they have the capability, at least in the future, of taking electronic payment?
Through you, Warden. Yes, in the future, we will definitely be looking to more forward innovative ways to collect fares. For the time being, we will start with cash. Yeah.
Council Robinson.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Stephanie, brilliant presentation, thank you very much, and you're certainly advancing Gray County through this initiative. Two questions. How will ridership data be collected? And secondly, I noticed in the additional features that could be purchased at a later time, there was a section dealing with fire suppression. How would an incident with regard to a fire be addressed on a, on a bus?
Through you, Warden. So the first question, or last question about fire suppression, the buses are all equipped with fire extinguishers that will suffice in an incident. You can always go above and beyond. That would, fire suppression systems would reduce insurance costs and risks in that sense if the whole bus had a fire. So that, we're talking about a very serious fire in that situation. However, each bus will come equipped to handle any incident. So in your other questions, how will ridership data be collected? The GPS systems that will be installed through First Student will be able to track where the buses are stopping, and ridership data can be collected that way. And we're also looking at some other innovative ideas, perhaps a transit ambassador programme, where we could have some people or volunteers on those buses to gather some other data to talk one-on-one with each rider, to find out why they're riding the bus. Because ultimately, no matter what, a calculator that says how many people are getting on and off the bus won't tell me anything about... about each unique rider, so we want to make sure we're engaging in multiple formats to learn about our riders.
Thank you Deputy Warden. In addition to this recommendation, on a previous Counsel recommendation, there was a request for a staff report dealing with the Highway 4 corridor. Could you just provide the status report of when that report will be before Counsel?
The next report will be coming in a few weeks in March and that will address those questions there.
Other questions? Counsel Larry?
Thank you Deputy Warden. Stephanie, other than Counselor Milne, who's going to drive these buses?
Through you Warden, yes, the buses will be driven by First Student, so we will be engaging in a contract with them so that they can drive the buses for us.
See no others, then I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's Carrie, thank you very much Stephanie. I believe Anne Marie's on deck with item 6B, the Community Homelessness Prevention Initiative. I need a mover to put that item on the floor. Counsel Robinson moves and Counsel Body is seconded. Anne Marie, oh, you have the floor.
Good morning County Counsel. So, the, before you is the report for the proposed investment plan for our Community Homelessness Prevention Initiative. These are provincial dollars which we receive to provide services that will help people that are experiencing homelessness or prevent homelessness and hopefully open up some options for affordable housing within Gray County. Financially, there is $1,888,000 that we receive from the province to run this program. There is, I have provided a chart on page 48 outlining what we plan to do with the funds. A lot of these are existing programs that we do run with exception of a few enhanced programs. Our Housing with Related Supports, our former domiciliary hostels, there are 70 rooms, beds, throughout the county in which we provide services or which other providers provide those services. They look at providing meals and assistance with daily living needs such as laundry, medication, and they're really an invaluable service to the people that live there. We are proposing an increase in the per diem. Gray County, when we did reach out to other areas, are, we are below what other areas are paying, and with the increase in staff costs and increase in food costs and whatever else, that there is a need for that slight increase. So, if we're looking at what it would cost to house a person for a year there, it's about $19,700 considering all the services that they're receiving and the support that they're receiving, that is a very good cost. Next on the list is our Sustainable Housing Benefit. This is available to residents of Gray County if they need some assistance with utility costs or last month's rent, some beds, appliances. It is, we do look at a person's income. They have to be under a certain amount of income in order to access the fund and it's very well used. Last year we had $478,000 worth of services that we provided through there. This is a service that we do provide through the county. We have our CMHA outreach worker and some rent supports that go with that too, so we have enlisted the assistance of Canadian Mental Health Association to have one of their employees work with us. So, they work with some of our tenants in order to maintain their tenancy, so say someone's struggling, we can hook them up with some of the services that CMHA offers and also with this worker. The worker also works very closely with our staff in order to provide that assistance that might be needed. Also included in there are some rental assessment, or rental supplements in which CMHA provides some services out in the community too with that. We have our homelessness prevention program that we've been working with the Y for many years in which they assist people with that sporadic homelessness, so somebody might find themselves homeless for whatever reason that night and may need some assistance, or they may need to find a place that might be a little bit more affordable for them. We have our emergency housing program. We have worked with the Y for this for a while. The YMCA is actually now working with 211, so at any time, 24 hours a day, if someone finds themselves in need of housing, they can call 211 and services will be provided, so they will be provided somewhere to go that night. YMCA is also working with all of our different police services to ensure that they are aware of the program and participating in the program too. We have our homelessness response table. This is new this year. This is working with the Gray Bruce Health Services, with CMHA, ourselves, and Bruce County and various other agencies that provide services to people experiencing homelessness. We're hiring a worker that will, so there'll be access to this homelessness table from all of those sites, all of those areas, and that worker will provide a wraparound service to that person in order to get them housed and also provide services. We're looking at taking in some of our, we're looking at using some of our units as transitional units to provide that immediate support, and that's going to be a pilot project we'll be working on this year. We also have our Community Enhancement Program in which we provide funds to various community agencies that are working with, or providing services to people who might require, such as meals, maybe rides, that sort of thing. Beaver Valley Outreach is a good example, Meals on the Hill, Oh Share, so we try to provide a little bit of extra support. We are not their only funder obviously, but we do try to provide funds specifically for homelessness. So, that is what we have planned for this year for the funding. Everything that we are doing does line up with our review of our 10-year housing and homelessness review, and so when we did go out for consultation, these are the services that we did hear that need to continue within our communities. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel Milne?
Thank you Mr. Warden, or Deputy Warden, sorry. Thank you Anne Marie. Are we meeting the needs of the community with this level of services or, I suppose it's almost a rhetorical question because it can always do more, but are we gaining or are we falling further behind?
I think with the lack of affordable housing, that's probably putting a little bit of a stressor, and the lack, and the low vacancy rate certainly puts a stressor on what we can. I think we're moving in the right direction. We had some really good input from the community on what was needed with our five-year review of our plan. The homelessness response table and the fact that we have two counties, healthcare, mental health, all working together for the first time is really moving forward, and it has worked in other areas and it's taken a very long time in other areas. We're actually learning from all of that and I'm really looking forward to what we can provide for people that are chronically homeless within our area that want to participate in this program. I think that that is, in six months, I'll be able to tell you a little bit more probably, but I'm really looking forward to this program being implemented.
Counsel Mackey?
Thanks Deputy Warden, thanks Anne Marie. The, I see there's 10% admin. Can you tell me how the admin is spent and do we need to have 10% there, or could some of that admin dollars be put towards direct service?
So, this is one of the very few programs from the province that we do get administration funds from that are at 10%. We do get some from other programs that are 5%, but a lot of the programs have very little contribution to our staffing in order to provide programs. So, these do, this does go towards our staffing costs rather than it being a levy cost since it is a provincial program.
Any others? Seeing none, then I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Wonderful. We do have a very ambitious target for reducing chronic homelessness by 50% and it looks like we're on our way. Okay, has the warden made it here yet? Counsel Desai? Is the warden here as yet? Okay, well, continue on then. Item C, Brian, you're on deck, dealing with the draft Gray County Cycling and Trails Master Plan. I need a mover, please. Moved by Counsel Milne, seconded by Counsel Hutchison. My apologies. Brian, you have the floor.
Okay. Get our slideshow up and off we go. Great, well, thank you so much Deputy Warden Hicks. Great to be here today and to bring a project we've been working on over the past year to County Council for their consideration. And to be clear, today's motion is really to receive the draft plan and to instruct us to further complete some public consultation. Unfortunately, our consultants, as you know, couldn't be with us today for obvious reasons, so I'll do my best to walk it through the plan. We did have a steering committee that worked on the plan over the past year, and that was Director of Planning Randy Schirzer, Director of Transportation Pat Hoy, Jason Wepler, who was going to attend this morning, health promoter with the Bruce Gray Health Unit, and then most recently Sean Potter from Transportation Services assisted us. So, I'll jump right in. This plan is really built on a number of other plans, including the provincial cycling strategy, which came to fruition in 2014, and that included initiatives like developing safer communities, improving cycling infrastructure, working on tourism, all of that very much consistent with our plan. The Gray County Transportation Master Plan in 2015 specifically had as one of its goals to encourage active transportation, including cycling and walking, and also to develop a network of continuous, a continuous network to allow those activities to exist. More recently, our paved shoulder policy in 2017, our official plan, most recently the recreational trails master plan just last year, and now we are landing this plan for your consideration today. So, we received some funding to take this out. Back in 2018, we got just over $530,000 from the provincial government through the Ontario Municipal Commuter Cycling Program, and the majority of that went to pay for paved shoulders, many of which have been already done, and I think we've got one more project left this year to do. However, there was a requirement to have a cycling strategy in place and we did not, so we received some funding to undertake a cycling strategy. We thought, we'd like to also add in trails because this is probably as close as we're ever going to get to an active transportation plan for Gray County, so that was the thinking there. And then we also purchased five bike counters, which we've been out counting cyclists on our roads with that money. So, right off the bat, and this is the second page in our plan, we think this is extremely important just that everybody understands what the master plan is and what it is not. So, for Counsel's consideration, I'll just quickly run through those. It is a long-range blueprint. It's a tool to facilitate implementation. There's a lot of great ideas, projects, practical ideas in the plan. It's a communications tool. It sort of speaks to our values, our vision, our, what we see the future for active transportation in Gray County, and it's a guide for future policies. However, it is not a schedule of capital projects, although there is some detailed work in the plan in the background to cost out some of the things that are in the plan, but it is not a schedule of projects nor feasibility study for any of those specific projects that may occur. It's not a prescriptive policy document. That means it's not binding on the county or any of its municipalities to carry out anything within it, and it's not a commitment to costs and funding. So, it really is an aspirational plan. I think it's a stretch plan for us as we look 10 years into the future for active transportation in Gray County. So, the study process went through three phases, and I think I'll go through these fairly quickly because they're fairly typical, I think, of most studies. There was a lot of background research done. We launched an engagement strategy. In phase two, we started to look at candidate routes. The consultants undertook a lot of field work. They were here many days taking photographs and looking at our roads. We developed an implementation plan and also had public consultation in this phase. And then, most recently, we've been finalizing the master plan, creating the draft network, running that by our municipal partners, and are here today to deliver a draft plan to you. And what we heard as we went through that public consultation, we really had three great in-person events. We had a stakeholder workshop just over a year ago in December where we invited stakeholders to share with us their thoughts and ideas, and we took those to form the basis of our network. We then brought that to a public open house. It was in March of this year. We had 50 attendees and a lot of great comment and input. And then, most recently, in October, we went back out to our municipalities to a combination of staff and elected officials, again, to run that network by them and to get comments and input. And we also did an online survey, which had almost 500 participants and a lot of data that was input for the plan. So, the vision for our plan is really to identify a complete, continuous, and connected network of high-quality cycling and trail routes. This will accommodate all ages and abilities, walkers, hikers, cyclists, skiers, equestrians, and opportunities to explore the county's natural landscape in a safe and enjoyable way all year round. So, that is really our vision for the plan. And in addition, we want to enhance the quality of life for our county residents by providing low-cost access and options to engage in physical activity, to improve their health and wellbeing, and also we want to improve opportunities for economic development and tourism by situating Gray County as a leader of cycling and trails in Ontario. And all of that through connecting our member municipalities, key destinations, and with our surrounding regions. So, that vision is supported by a number of objectives, and I don't think I'll go through them all, but the continuous and connected routes is again very important, as you could imagine, accessibility and inclusivity for many different trail users, cyclist types, et cetera, and to provide recreational commuting and touring opportunities within Gray County in addition to many more. So, four main steps we took to develop the network. Step one was to review and map the existing conditions. What do we have already? And we're blessed in Gray County. We already have several tourism cycling routes, paved shoulders, a lot of trails, et cetera, so those are all mapped. Then we looked at the gaps and opportunities where those don't connect because they're often disparate and they end and you can't connect between them. We undertook field investigations, the consultants did, to look at all of those possible routes, and then finally, using a variety of tools, confirming the network and selecting the facilities or the actual, what is recommended on the routes. And this process was iterative. That is, every time we did one, it sort of went back and informed the others so that we moved forward with the plan. So, key design considerations, OTM 18 is guidance for municipal road authorities for cycling facilities, so it's sort of the guidebook, and it was just in the process of being updated, so thankfully our consultants were also working on that book, so they were able to bring us the very latest. So, that basically gives us guidance as far as operating the speed of the roadway and how many cars are on it, what type of facility is recommended, and then once that is in hand, many other considerations are taken into account, the function of the street, types of vehicles, are there big trucks on that road or not, the road platform, the anticipated users of the route, and so on. So, all of those design considerations are taken into account, applied to the proposed route, and then this is what we are presenting today. I'm sorry, I'm going to close this little box up here. So, 836 kilometres of proposed facilities, and if you look at the map, I think you'll see that a lot of those are on county roads. Most of our main connector county roads, east and west, still form the basis for our cycling and trails network. And then you can see, in some cases, those don't connect all the way through, so that's where member municipality roads are included or suggested to complete the network. Those are typically the dotted blue lines on the map. So, it is a very ambitious plan. It's a lot of kilometres, and that breaks down on the right-hand side, you can see 304 kilometres of paved shoulders. Those would also be signed, so signed route as well. 459 kilometres of signed routes, meaning no further facility would be built. There would just be a sign put up about every kilometre in rural areas and a little bit less in urban. Off-road trails, short connector is recommended, 1.000 Off-road trails, short connector is recommended, 1.7 kilometers. Edge line is basically a paved shoulder in an urban area where there's a curb. So it's a very hard stop on, on the right-hand side. Bike lanes, which are designated bike lanes, 4.8 kilometers. 60 kilometers of buffered paved shoulders, which are certainly a more expensive facility. That means there's actually a bit of separation between the paved shoulder and the traveled portion of the highway. That's mostly Gray Road Four, which was a bit of a challenge. It's just such an important east-west connector, and we just couldn't really find another way around it. And then in boulevard pathways of 1.4 kilometers. So those are all the proposed facilities. And the philosophy is to really focus on the next 10 years. So out of that 800 kilometers, a, a big chunk of that will be farther in the future. The next 10 years is really where we felt we wanted to focus our efforts. And the important thing is that this plan is really built on top of Gray County's existing 10-year capital plan. So the consultants worked with our Transportation Services staff to clearly understand what's in the plan for the next 10 years and to really try to base our network on that as much as possible. In, in essence, use money that's already being allocated. In addition to that, some quick wins, which are maybe short gaps, which could complete connectivity and keep, make a gap or close a gap between two important routes, and also to invest in some of the cycling loops that we have for tourism use. So implementing the plan, now we're getting down into the sort of costs and number of kilometers, all these, these good things. So the short term is, well, short term is 10 years. Many of us would call that long term. I guess in, in road parlance, that's considered short term. So between '20 and '29, 373 kilometers are proposed to be implemented, and then the other 360 kilometers in the long term beyond '2030. And as you can see, the vast majority of that is paved shoulders. In the short term, 120 kilometers, so those are all on county roads. And then in addition, another 248 kilometers of signed routes, and that's a mix of county road and member municipalities roads. And again, the important to stress that this is not prescriptive, that this phasing breakdown would be reviewed on an annual basis in conjunction with the county's plans and hopefully with member municipality plans as well. So what is the price tag? Well, $3.5 million for those short-term implementation over the next 10 years. 3.1 million of that, the vast majority, is for projects that are already in our capital plan. So basically, they're already in the plan. Really, we're looking at another $400,000 for projects that would be outside the county plan or that would also fall to the lower-tier member municipalities. And again, we feel it's very important to look at external funding sources to help fund some of that. And also, I think staff feel, and maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, the next step will be to really look at priorities so that even within that $400,000, we feel that could be prioritized over the next 10 years. So it's not like we're going to do it all next year or the year after. Another important part of the plan, and really, I think, a very exciting one, I, I hope for everybody, is really looking ahead for active transportation. It's certainly something that we feel our residents are interested in, our visitors are interested in. It leads to healthy living, quality of life, all those good things that, that, that we know we want to provide in our communities. So our plan really has a number of recommendations. We've just highlighted three here. One is to create a county cycling and trails committee, a group that would be just a little more responsible for looking at cycling and all the many aspects, not just the tourism aspects, which we tend to focus on at Gray County right now, but also things like bike rodeos and, and, and things that happen within communities. Establishing active school travel programs. Some municipalities, I do believe, have this, but again, the thought is, could they, with maybe a little help and, and coordination by the county, could they become more prevalent across Gray County? And then also to create experience-oriented route maps, which just use cycling really as a way to discover our county. So supporting the implementation, again, the committee, as I mentioned, is, is one recommendation. Collaboration, this certainly is a partnership. There's no question when you look at a network across Gray County, it's certainly very important that member municipalities and the county work together. But there's also many other partners, like the Public Health Unit, school boards, OPP. We have many trail groups, including the Bruce Trail, which are very important partners, local businesses, clubs, advocacy groups, et cetera. And then finally, funding is really looking at, at the costs of the plan to implement it, where those can come from. Some, as I mentioned, are already built in, and others, we need to go out and find a bit of new money to make this happen. And finally, just to say that this plan really was a collaborative effort between the county, member municipalities, the Gray-Bruce Health Unit. We did have a lot of input from stakeholder groups and residents as well. And we hope that this is a great step, step forward for the next 10 years as we, we look to embrace and increase active transportation across Gray County. So next steps in the plan would be to formally adopt this plan as a policy document, identify some of the projects each year that are within, are suggested within the plan as they come up with our, our capital planning process. Certainly engage in consultant consultation and engagement with our member municipalities and stakeholders. And we are sort of kicking off a 30-day public review period today. So unfortunately, we had a public information session that was, was scheduled right after council. That's been canceled due to the weather, but we will reschedule that fairly shortly. And then reaching out to key stakeholders as we go forward in implementation. So I think that's it for the formal presentation. And certainly, if there are any questions by council, I've, we've got some backup here in case there's any tough questions, but we're, we're certainly open for that. Thank you.
So thank you, Brian. Very good presentation. I'm hearing a lot about cycling and Gray County being a, a key destination for that, and particularly the Blue Mountains. I wonder just though, if you might, you didn't comment in your presentation, but are membership or participation in the Great Lakes Cycle Trail, just very brief on that?
Trail, we're there. Came through Gray County about two years ago. So it is a signed route from Wyerton along Gray Road One through Owen Sound. Then it jumps onto the Tom Thompson Trail over to Meaford, and then picks up the Georgian Trail right through to the town of the Blue Mountains. And so that is a signed route. It's really probably the backbone of our, our cycling. It's very popular. And this year, we will be hosting a, a one-week tour. About 150 cyclists will be touring that route through Gray County and then over into Bruce County and carrying on. But they're certainly very keen. I've already had some comments about our plan from them, and they're very encouraging.
Right, Staff, Counselor Boddy.
Thank you Deputy Warren Hicks. I, I noted it said 1.7 kilometers of off-road. What about the rail trail? That's going to be more than 1.7, and I've been on it quite a few times. I've been on my head on it unfortunately a couple of times. Last time I was on, somebody was riding in from Chatsworth to, to go to work in Owen Sound. So they're using it for more than just recreation and landing on their head. So that didn't seem to be showing up there as off, off-road.
I can try to speak to that, and thank you through you, Mr. Deputy Warden. So part of the CP rail trail, obviously, it exists today. So some of those facility types and breakdowns are connections that we want to make. And I think actually some of those connections are over in Blue Mountains. If I'm not mistaken, there might be one in Meaford as well, but that make up that 1.7. So there are some, definitely some improvements that we can always make to our existing trails. For the CP rail trail, that'll be covered in our Recreational Trails Master Plan. That was approved later in 2019 in terms of trying to look at some improvements. This cycling trails master plan does get into looking at enhancing some of those crossings where they go across, say, county roads or provincial highways on the CP rail trail. So we're going to dig into those further. That's also supported by our Recreational Trails Master Plan, that we're going to look at those, those, those crossings because they are key crossings, that we want to make sure we're providing safe, safe crossings for those trail users. And we also, again, want to look at improvements. Part of the recommendations in the Recreational Trails Master Plan is to look at, especially in our key settlement areas where, where that trail goes through, should we be looking at paving some of those sections? Some of what the city of Owen Sound has done for parts of your rail trail that you own, that some are paved now, sections. So those are some of the things we want to explore further. Part of the RTMP and based on the recommendations of the Cycling Trails Master Plan, we're going to be developing a 10-year capital plan for improvements for trails, both for CP rail trail as well as our forest trails. So that's something that will be coming out of both the Recreational Trails Master Plan as well as this document.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden. My question is with regards to the master plan and how it connects with the cycling map that Gray County has had for a while. Does the map inform the, the master plan at all? Because I, I looked through the map and there's certain, we have established certain routes, such as the, the Bujeros Loop and so on, which do not, I, I do not see them on the, on the master plan map. So how closely linked are these two documents?
I could speak to that. They are quite closely linked. There might be a few sections of our, and by the way, our brand-new cycling map is out, so we'll make sure everybody gets a copy of that. There may be a few sections of that that, that aren't on that, but by and large, yeah, all these routes should be in, in map two, two A. So there may be one or two sections missing. But yeah, the consultants really started with these routes and then looked at expanding them across the county.
Oh, further question?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, Deputy Warden. My, my issue here, and I, I may not look like it, but I do love cycling and I do love the tourism that it brings. My issue here is that there are certain municipal roads that are marked on, that are marked on the cycling map, and they're marked on the master cycling plan as well, which may not necessarily be in best shape for cyclists. They, they work well enough for a vehicle and, you know, for motorized vehicles, but they might not be best for cycling use. So my concern rises that joint and several liability is, is a big issue for municipalities. The other issue is how, how, how do lower tiers pay for the maintenance of these roads if they are not exactly high priority at the lower-tier level? And my third question on this will be with, with, with issues of signage. If a, if the master plan has identified a particular route as one which is signed or is proposing that it be a signed route, does signage and maintenance of that signage fall onto the lower tier or does it fall onto the upper tier?
Thank you, this may be, I don't know, Pat or Randy, or maybe both?
I could start this, I guess, through you, Mr. Deputy Warden. I think the first thing was just the condition of a road, for example. And I think an important thing to remember is, and we found this during our public sessions, it's not all the high-speed Tour de France cyclists that were involved in this plan. So someone like myself, I want to be on the road with the least amount of traffic. I don't really care if it's gravel or not. I'm, I'm riding a mountain bike. I'm not looking to get anywhere in a hurry and just driving around, maybe trying to take my daughter out for a ride or something, right? So I think, and, and the condition of all, all the, all the roads on, on the plan are, are noted. So there is some gravel. Not everything is paved, not everything is high-end, not everything has paved shoulders. So, you know, that's kind of, it's such a variety of facilities for everybody. And as far as liability, I think it isn't a prescriptive plan. And, and we are going to try to look as far as signage and covering ourselves off of book 18 because it is a standard, you know, it is an Ontario traffic manual. That being said, there's lots of facilities out there that just, because of economics, you just cannot make everything perfection. So I think, you know, from our point of view, we, we're making the best effort we can. We're going to try to make the quick wins first, tackle the issues that we need to tackle. And we know where the cyclists are with Brian's counters. We're finding out. There's obviously ones on there that are recommended for eventual signage, which are going to come to fruition somewhere in the future. So we all think the signage number is fairly large, like 240 kilometers of signage is obviously a lot of signage. So we're really going to try to prioritize what, what those projects are.
Thank you, Counselor Mackey and then Counselor Robinson.
Thanks Deputy Warden. I think Pat just answered the bulk of my question, but you know, just to follow up on Counselor Desai, what is the expectation of the lower-tier municipality? And I was thinking specifically of a road that we just hardened chip that is on the designated route. We got a lot of negative feedback from the cycling community because the chips go to the, the side of the, the road, and it didn't make for a great cycling area anymore. So, you know, we got the, the negative feedback from the road cyclists because they were expecting a county road, and our municipal roads are not always up to the county standard.
Well, I, I think my understanding with tar and chip is that after a year, it kind of settles down, and then it gets a little better surface. So I, I know there have been issues in the past for that first year when it's, it's tough going. I think we feel as, as the study team that a big next step is really getting together with our member municipalities to really talk about these exact questions, about legal and liability, about maintenance. And I wish I could say there were really hard and clear answers. We've asked that and really pressed our consultants on that. It is still a bit of a gray area, but I think trying to get the best education to the table and sitting down and, and having that discussion with our member municipalities is important. Perhaps one example, I just talked about the Great Lakes Waterfront Trail. Well, part of that is on the Tom Thompson Trail, which is on gravel roads in, in the municipality of Meaford. It's been there for years. It's really, I think, about setting expectation for our users so that they know it's a gravel road, you're going to need a hybrid or, or even a mountain bike. And I think that's important to note in our plan, that a lot of it is gravel, and there is no intention that it should become hard-surfaced, but it's just being very clear to our users what we have, where it is, and what to expect when, when they're on the road.
I would just say that there's nothing wrong with gray areas. Sorry.
Thank you Deputy Warden. Appreciate that. Brian, very, very well done on the Gray County Cycling and Trails Master Plan. So I'm excited to support this. Three questions if I might, or one might just be a statement, quite frankly. But first question, could you talk a little further about the challenges with regard to Highway Four and the options of different routes in, in regard to county or concessions versus county road? Also, winter maintenance overall, how will that be addressed? If, if there is a winter maintenance program for this master plan? And thirdly, what would be the process for getting the word out for the rescheduled public session for, for this plan?
I think I could answer the first couple of those because transportation folks, we were very concerned about the buffered. Basically, because of the volumes and the speed on, on Gray Road Four, it's calling for the buffered bike lanes. So all of a sudden, you know, you, you know, where you, normally you think about paving your meter and a half. You've got another buffer in between, so you've got another two meters of total pavement maybe to, to put on there. But we knew all the, all the, all the communities on Gray Road Four are important and relatively close too. You know, when you go from Waukatoon to Hanover to Durham to Fletcherton, it really is a, a very central link in the whole county. So we would have much rather had them go somewhere else, or I would have anyway, I don't know about you guys, but. Because it's very busy, right? But there's really no other artery that works as well. You know, we looked into even, there's an old rail trail. Some portions of it people don't own anymore. There's private owners. We, we kind of looked into a lot of different variations on how we could join those communities. And none really worked out as easily as Gray Road Four, although it's going to cost us a lot of money. So as Brian said, you know, most of Gray Road Four is be outside the 10-year plan because it's so well-constructed in the travel lanes. So it's going to be something we're going to have to figure out an implementation plan for and to figure out how to join those communities with active transportation that way. One other question, just as far as winter maintenance, we have been closing any of our actual bike lanes in the winter. So we, we won't be doing, or I don't foresee it in the future, immediate future, doing any winter maintenance on a, a bike lane.
Your last question, we will be setting a date. We'll, we'll probably have that by tomorrow at the latest. And we have a mailing list of about 130 stakeholders, so that'll go out by email to everybody. Then we'll hit social media and hoping within about two weeks fairly quickly to, to reschedule the open house.
So with regard to West Gray being part of, of the whole cycling and trails master plan, would that be something that staff could provide a report at the appropriate time just to see how we can integrate that section of Gray County into the master plan? If there's other options through concession roads, et cetera?
I think our hope is that when we bring this back to council for consideration, we'll bring recommendations. They may be recommendations of how we're going to consult with member municipalities just in the, in the sort of, we're hoping to get this wrapped within a month. So we want to get, get back out to municipalities with if there's anything missing or absent or, or key issues with the plan, please tell us now. But sort of the longer-term implementation, we feel that absolutely there needs to be some conversations, some meetings and a full understanding of how that rolls out in local roads. So I think that's, unless Randy or Pat have anything to add to that, that's our hope.
Okay, Counselor Desai, I believe you're on again, but Counselor Desai, you may have missed the message at the beginning of the meeting, you weren't here. We're trying to strike a balance between good conversation and moving the agenda along in terms of weather, but go ahead.
I appreciate you allowing me to talk because it, it makes me think I, I do bring good conversation to the table. My, I, I haven't heard any opposition from the member across, so I, I, I will assume I'm right. My concern, Mr. Deputy Warden, comes from, from the cycling map marking, not from gravel roads. I do hear the, the opinion on the gravel roads and I understand that, that there is bicycles that are made for use on gravel roads. My, my concern, Mr. Warden, comes more from the, Mr. Deputy Warden, comes more from the fact that our cycling map marks certain roads as, as intended for safe cycling when they may not necessarily be safe for cyclists because there is issues such as potholes and so on, which like I said, works with, they don't create much of an issue for motorized vehicles, but for a cyclist, that is a fairly large issue, which could lead to claims against lower-tier municipalities. That is my concern and, and which is why I ask whether the maintenance of that should fall onto the upper tier for marking these as safe cycling routes or, yeah.
Thank you.
So I'll, I'll pick up. I know that when I see the cycling trails map, it has sort of levels laid out. And I would think that cyclists would be looking at a map and, and sort of gauging what sort of risk they're up for. I, I do see that already in our maps, but perhaps Brian, you can add whatever you need to.
This, this really was a very key question that we pressed our consultants on. If you sign a route, is there a higher expectation for a level of maintenance? And I'm not sure we got a really clear answer. And to be honest, as we're going through our implementation, I think we all want to be really clear on that before we sign any routes, that we understand exactly what the obligation is. And I've got an opinion, but I don't think it'd be very fruitful to, to put that forward at this time. So I, I think we'll leave it there if it's okay, but we certainly, that's an issue we've talked about on our team and we know municipalities are very concerned with and we'll get the best answers as we go forward.
Okay, I'm going to let Pat speak and then Kim. Yep?
Sorry, like, like any maintenance on our road, if we know there's cyclists or pedestrians know or ought to have known, my favorite lawyer term, we're going to be making sure those are in good repair. So there's, it's, you're not wrong that there's not a risk there. We've had, we have had claims on our paved shoulders that we wouldn't have had if there was no cyclists around. So we're just doing our due diligence, trying to do our best, telling our guys, keep an eye open, same as if there's a, if there's a pothole where you know there's a pedestrian, right? You're, don't just drive by, we have to, to look at these and try to repair them, right? So you're still under that, you know, municipal liability envelope that you kind of do your best to get out of, that it's very difficult to get out of sometimes, right? So.
If I can just add, I think it's just important to remember that this is a draft plan and the chain, and what's on here is what is proposed to create a network that really tries to optimize the opportunities and the assets that we have. I think part of the commenting period, the use of that is to understand the perspectives from the member municipalities, from the public and such. If there are things on there that need to be changed, that's the purpose of, of going out for comment and trying to understand. But at least what you have before you is the, is the overall vision for what could be and then what people decide to implement and how it's decided to implement is something that will come back in the final report. Is that fair? Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to hear from Warden McQueen and then Counselor Mackey and then I'm going to call the question.
Well, thank you, Deputy Warden. And just a quick question in the sense that for the cycling, a lot of the cycling clubs, and I know I think Blue Mountain has the second largest cycling group in Ontario next to, I know we got, they got that award a few years back there. So you have your regular cycling bike, I don't know what you call that, but then we, you know, in the past, we've seen BMX bikes or the, more like the mountain bike, right? But I've seen more like at Costco or other places where they have, I think somebody mentioned about the big fat tire bike. And I think they're even getting into more like snow tires on them, you can run them in the winter time. Is that the next phase of recreational bicycling in the sense? Because it seems like they're, I guess, you know, like a bigger tire can take over bigger gravel and stone and, and that, or the, the guys that are out there, the women and the guys that are out there doing the, you know, the courses and stuff, they've got those skinny tires and they, you know, sharp stones are a problem. I just wonder, is that something that's, that's the new future of, of more or less recreational cycling, I guess you may be able to call it, I don't know. Thank you.
Warden McQueen, fat biking and gravel bikes now, there's actually specific, a whole breed of bikes just built for gravel, for gravel roads. So, and those are very popular. So we're hearing more and more, I'll be at the bike show next week, more about off-road trails, fat, and most fat biking can occur on off-road trails if cycling is permitted. And you're absolutely right, we're seeing them a lot more in the winter. I see a guy every day who goes between Hanover and Elmwood on a fat bike. It's an e-bike, so he's, that's his mode of transportation. So yes.
Okay, and we have Counselor Mackey running scared, so with that said, we'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? That is carried. Counsel, we're going to take a short break. I believe that Sarah's on deck when we come back. And when we come back, Warden McQueen will be in the, in the chair.
Well, welcome back, everyone, and thank you Deputy Warden and Counselor Hicks for taking over for me this morning. I had a busy, busy morning with the opening of Food Land, which was well, well attended. So, moving on to our agenda, I got the word that we're supposed to move this along fairly quickly, like be done by lunch, Mr. O'Leary? Is that right? Eleven thirty, okay. Well, we'll do our best. It's up to you guys what you do, right? So, so, moving on with our agenda, we have Item D, and can I have a mover in a second, or and Sarah, would you mind coming up? Counselor Burley, Counselor O'Leary, thank you for that. Welcome, Sarah, and the floor is yours.
Are we on? Okay, great. So, this one, fortunately, it will be a brief presentation. My other report that it's two down the docket, I was just finishing my speaking notes when I got word that I needed to consolidate it. So, we'll, I'll do my best, but the forestry management plan, we are very excited. We have, in consultation with the Forestry Management Advisory Committee, have completed a, the draft, and we are ready to bring it forward to the public. So, just a brief background, the plan that currently is in place is, it was approved in 2003, and it's a twenty-year horizon. So, that will be complete, obviously, in 2023. So, we have a new plan that has been drafted with the assistance of, well, Gray-Salvo Conservation Authority has drafted it for us, and we have worked with them closely. The plan itself applies to county-owned forest properties, and it, again, is in it for another twenty-year horizon. Some of the key components of the forestry management plans are that if the forests are managed well, they will result, obviously, in the long-term health of the forests, which will result in the ability for them to have resources that can be harvested and, obviously, generate income. They will provide other aspects, including employment, recreation, tourism, as well as the many environmental and ecological benefits. So, staff are, this is who we are proposing to be consulting with. Obviously, we have been consulting through the process with representatives from some, many agencies that are sitting on the advisory committee. But staff are recommending that the report be received, and that we are directed to solicit input from the public and agencies, and following that input, have a revised plan presented to the advisory committee and county council for consideration.
Okay, thank you for that, Sarah, and will we see the trees for the forest plan? You don't have to answer that one. Just trying to add some here. Is there any questions to this? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Sarah. Nobody's, everybody's sort of quiet today, aren't they? Can't have any fun. All right, moving on to official plan amendment, and Stephanie is going to be looking after this. Can I have a mover in a second, please? Counselor Carlton and Counselor Keveney, I gotta get my brain working here. Thank you for that. And Sarah, the floor is... Sorry, Sarah? Stephanie. Oh, sorry, Stephanie, that's two S's there. Sorry, I apologize. It won't happen again, Stephanie. Floor is yours.
Okay, we're good. Try to whip through this. We have a proposed county official plan amendment. It's a merit report. The property is in Georgian Bless, and it's a proposed expansion to an existing quarry that's currently operated by Harold Sutherland Construction. Here's a following air photo of the subject property. So, immediately to the north is where the existing quarry operation is. And so, the, the lands to the south are what have been acquired by the current pit or quarry operator. And the, the lands that are in the Broken Maroon area, it covers the, the licensed area for the, the pit operation, quarry operation. So, the subject property is designated agricultural and rural. The reason why the applicant is required to go through a county official plan amendment process is because the lands aren't currently recognized under the county official plan as an aggregate resource area. And so, the subject lands are currently classified, again, as agricultural and rural. A zoning bylaw amendment is also required from the township of Georgian Bless for this application. The subject lands are approximately thirty-two point five hectares in size, whereas the proposed license area will be only fifteen point five-five hectares, and only fourteen point four hectares of the area will be proposed for the extraction. The quarry will be below the water table operation. The existing quarry to the north is currently licensed to extract it on an annual basis, four thou, four hundred thousand tons. And so, the cumulative extraction will remain four thou, four hundred thousand tons. The haulage route will remain the same and continue to use existing entrance off Gray Road, Gray Road One. There have been five sensitive receptors located in prox, five hundred meters from the, the subject licensed area. The applicant has already gone through and begun the process to acquire a license through the Aggregate Resource Act, and there are currently no outstanding concerns from members of the public and agencies at this time. So, we have, based on staff's review, county staff are recommending the proposed county official plan amendment be received, and that the proposal proceeds to a joint public meeting with the township of Georgian Bless at this time. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Stephanie. Are there any questions to this report? You guys are a quiet bunch. All in favor? That is carried. All right, that's pretty easy, eh? All right, moving on, back to Sarah. Forest management annual report and enforcement. So, can I have a mover in a second for that report, please? Counselor Mullin, Counselor Willbury, Sarah, the...
So, I will, I will do my best to keep this as brief as I can. This report is meant to highlight our forestry activities that have occurred, in this case, throughout the year. Previously, we had been recording or reporting on this on as, you know, on a month-by-month base, basis, and most recently, we had started to do it quarterly, because the information that was being presented, it made more sense to present it in one big chunk. So, that's as moving forward, what staff are proposing how we report on it. However, on a monthly basis, we still receive these reports from our forest manager, who is also our, our bylaw enforcement officer, Lee Thurston. So, a lot of the things that are included in this are what he provides us in those monthly reports, but as well, we wanted to highlight a couple of other projects and activities that are happening within the county as it relates to forestry. So, about approximately forty to forty-five percent of the county, both privately and publicly owned lands are, is forest cover. Forests themselves, as, as I mentioned in my previous report, they provide an economic benefit, a tourism and recreation benefit, as well as mental and, mental and physical health, and obviously, environmental contributions as well. So, as I mentioned, there are a number of projects going on in the county as it relates to forestry. Recently presented, the forestry management bylaw, we are currently in the process of updating. The forestry management plan I just presented earlier, we are updating that as well. The recreational trails master plan, which has been mentioned today, was approved in November of this past year, and it has a lot of impact on our county forests and how we are going to manage recreational opportunities in them, as well as projects that we have going on, like the Climate Change Action Plan, and as well as the traditional, or the, excuse me, the monitoring of harvesting and the minor exemption applications. So, what I wanted to discuss, and I didn't include in the PowerPoint, was because these tables were quite large, and I don't think they would have displayed very well, but Table One in the report that I drafted shows all of the intent to cut applications. So, these are the permits that are harvested. It's not clear-cutting. These are the, the applications that you would not necessarily see, except for in these monthly reports or previously, that we previously noted. So, instead of doing on a month-by-month basis, we did each of the municipalities from 2017 to 2019. And the, the table itself gives you a good overview, showing that these, there's a relatively stable level of, of these types of applications coming in, and a minor increase in 2019. Just, so, basically, it seems to be that the industry is doing well and, and it's, it's consistent. Table Two reflects the minor exemption applications, and these are the applications that myself and other staff have brought forward, where people have made a request to go above and beyond what is permitted in the bylaw, and they ask for an exemption. And it's essentially a clearing or clear-cutting of the property. These, obviously, are, the volume are less over the, the years, and obviously, I had a, a bigger timeframe from, I think, we started in 2012 in the table. But these are the applications that take a bit more time to process. They have to be circulated to the different agencies, and we have to go through a, an application process and a reporting process, and then an approval process. So, that just gives you an idea of the activity over the last couple of years, what has been occurring. Specifically, with regards to county forests and revenue that has come in, since two, between 2017 and 2019, we had fourteen forests that had harvesting activities occurring in them that generated a revenue of approximately, well, just over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The other duties that aren't necessarily noted in the, the bylaw enforcement reports that we get, but just to highlight them, are that there is an overseeing of marking that occur, that for, with, for the county forests, many, many site visits, invasive species and species at risk tracking and verification, as well as investigation of possible bylaw infraction, infractions. The other part of this report is the discussion that we wanted to have about the bylaw enforcement officer report. The existing bylaw that we have in place needs to be updated. There's been staffing changes. Carl Sadler was previously the bylaw enforcement officer. He's since retired, and we've got Lee noted as the backup, and we want to make that just basically up to date. My report also talks about an alternative for Lee, and I just, for the benefit of counsel, there's been some recent staffing changes that we've been notified of, and Jason Trainer isn't on staff anymore, is, is, has resigned from his position, and so, we are not going to be naming him as the alternate. We will have a conversation with Gray-Salvo to determine who we need to, who, who will fill that position, but just for the benefit of counsel, we aren't going to be naming Jason. It'll be a different individual. And in addition to that, the other part was that there is very rarely, but it has occurred, where both the bylaw officer and the alternate aren't available to assist. And so, we wanted to add a clause to the bylaw that's, when necessary, the director of planning or his and her, his or her designate will be delegated authority to appoint another credentialed enforcement officer at the time. So, staff are recommending that the report itself be received, and that the, the bylaw be prepared to appoint Lee and an alternate, as well as the provisions for the director of planning to have the ability to delegate another appointed officer if, if need be.
Thanks, Sarah, and just a couple of points. Carl Sadler, there was a video, there was a video at one time that he had, and I don't, it'd be great to share that maybe with the new council, and I don't know if Lee's gonna be in a new video or not. He's smiling back there, 'cause that, that, that sort of talked about the importance of what they did and stuff like that, so I think that was, they have some time to show that. And also, with the minor exemption, when there's an application made, does that get a bit of two and full ones, says, well, somebody's asking for ten acres, but no, we'll support three acres. Is there, that dialogue also goes on?
As part of the process, it's, we mimicked the Planning Act process when, when it, when the bylaw was created. But essentially, it circulated to municipalities, to the conservation authority, to any other agency that it might be applicable to, and, and then, obviously, it's circulated to planning staff and Lee himself and any neighbors. And based on comments that we receive, and a lot of times, those comments come from the conservation authority where, or Lee, where there's certain areas, we can support X amount as opposed to the, the full ask, I guess.
So, there's good dialogue. I know there was one application a few years back where a lot of the Scotch pine it died, or there was a blight or something that was in there, and, and I think also, there's a change that the, the landowners within so far get circulated to. Okay, are there any other question, or any questions from county council to that report? The report, seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. All right, so, the next one we have is the Orchardville Bridge in Pat, and you have contingent, that's, where's Pat? Oh, there you are. Can't see you for looking. I'm looking at your chair. Sorry about that, Pat. I guess I saw too much of you last few days. I just forgot what you looked like, I guess. Sorry about that, Pat. I was looking over at your chair going, where was he? Anyway, Pat, floor is, okay, we need a mover in a second, or sorry. Just having too much fun today. Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Potter. Go ahead, Pat. I apologize.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm here to, to talk about the Orchardville Bridge. I talked about it briefly in our 2020 budget. So, it was built in 1920. It's a bowstring arch, which is no longer within the bridge code. You can't even build that type of structure anymore as a, because some of the structural members of that type, if you hit them, the bridge could collapse. So, you don't see many of them anymore. There was only two left in Gray County. If we remove this, there'll be one. So, it's been closed since 2009, as, you know, as it's a hundred years old this year. It's gotten to the, well past the end of its life. We started an EA in 2017, Higher GM Blue Plan, and they did a cultural heritage evaluation report, hired an archaeologist, and it did have some cultural significance, of course, being a hundred years old. So, you'll see, the map is on page seventy-eight, and just to give a little background on why we own that, that was a town line. That's, that is the line, if you see the Orchardville side road, that is the, the boundary between West Gray and South Gate. So, everybody, of course, just assumes it's Highway Six. I believe that was the old Highway Six. So, that's how we inherited both those structures. There's the nine hundred two seventy-two, which is the one we're talking about, and then, there's nine hundred two seventy-one, which is also a county structure, which is staying in its current location. So, just a couple little issues. There is one property that owns, you'll see the water course running through nine hundred two seventy-two there. There is one property which has land on both sides of that water course. So, that's the most impacted residence. So, so, we went through the, the full Schedule BEA. The recommended option was for the removal of the existing structure with full recording and documentation of the heritage structure, and it's considered appropriate for this undertaking. So, they have documented a lot about that bridge as far as pictures and that type of thing, and just to kind of keep it in our, in our memory on, on what it was in its past. So, we had a public meeting on a very cold night in December on-site, which I don't know why we thought that was a good idea, but we had all the residents come out, and we know it's, it's, you know, in their neighborhood, it's, it's a nice little road there. They have some nice properties. We have barricaded that bridge for quite a few years. The barricades keep getting moved repeatedly, because people just want to walk across it or take their tractor or take their snowmobile or... We have kind of gotten away from going down there and moving the barricades back all the time. So, it's just, it's a, it's a liability risk for us, and the fact that it was left open since 2009 for pedestrians, but there is pieces falling off now. So, and that's a hazard to somebody in a canoe or somebody standing on it. And so, it just, I can see why it ended up, you know, going through all the options, why the removal was the recommended solution. So, we have, the other thing I wanted to mention about the motion was, since Gamsby-Mannerow has completed so much study of this structure, our next step is, once we do the full notification of the, of the study completion, we'll need a set of engineering drawings, which will be removing the existing structure. And, you know, usually, you're doing some kind of riprap on the shoreline to make sure there's no erosion issues, and kind of making it look nice. So, be a dead, you know, dead end on the road there, which is not our road, but it, it's a township road. So, it will be left in a condition that, because there is a little empty old park there as well in that location. So, that's kind of our next step. We have a hundred and twenty-seven thousand in this year's budget related to remove. step. We have 127,000 in this year's budget related to removal of the structure. So.
Thanks, Pat, and are there any questions to that? Counselor Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I note that it is one of two left in the county of that particular design. Hundred and thirty K to remove it, and you note $200 a year to maintain it. So, the math, Counselor Desai, you can help me with that. The math works out pretty good, that we can maintain it for a long time to go ahead. But, my question particularly is, in regards to your Option Five, you talk about in your report, that a detailed review and consideration of technical and economic implications was done. I wonder if you could share a little bit more of that detailed review with us, please?
Thank you. Pat?
I guess through you, Mr. Warden, I guess the $200 a year is for our, probably more than that now, 'cause we've got some inflation there, but that is really for just the Osim inspection. So, yeah, two twenty, yeah. So, we're really paying, right now, we are doing not much to maintain it. As far as, I don't have the full cost-benefit report in front of me, but like any other bridge, you're into, you know, hundreds of thousands, possibly up to $800,000 to replace the structure for some pedestrians, really, is ultimately this, this solution. So, that's kind of where we got away from wanting to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions from counsel? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Make that note on the TV, right? All right, moving on now, then, to Mr. Ruppler. Year-end surpluses. So, I need a mover and a second for that, please, for that report. Counselor Patterson, Counselor Gamble, welcome, Kevin. We like always your surplus reports.
Thank you, Warden. Yes, this is my annual year-end transfers report, that I detail the year-end surplus and deficits, and how we want to treat those, as well as year-end transfers for purchases that were budgeted to occur that need to be carried forward to 2020, year-end transfers of donations that were given for specific purposes, and any year-end provincial funds that we need to, to be carried forward to be utilized in 2020. So, each department has now reviewed its actual, to budget figures as of mid-February, and has projected a year-end position, and still estimating results still to happen. The summary on page eighty shows for the, based on those functions, that the county is looking at about a $1.2 million surplus. Significant to that is the, the net supplementaries from the town of Blue Mountain of $1.1 million. So, without that, you'd be looking at roughly of, of a surplus of about $107,000 here for those four function, major functions. On page, the next page eighty-one, I detail the surplus and deficit transfers that are being recommended by staff. For example, based under corporate services, there's the notice of motion that to, to provide that surplus, the funding of the net supplementaries from the town of Blue Mountain for their attainable housing projects. So, I'm showing that $1.1 million being part for that purpose. The rest is, is being recommended to our one-time funding reserve. Our one-time funding reserve is a stabilization reserve we use to fund one-time requests or deficits that occur in small departments that the reserves aren't sufficient enough. So, I've broken those down by each of the, the functions here in the departments, and where they would like to, to move their money to reserve or from reserve in order to, to fund deficits. And then, in the page eighty-two, this non-budgeted transfers table, these are items that were projects that were budgeted. The first, the 2019 project funding to reserve transfer Mount Colm is, is taxation money that was budgeted for a project that has not been completed for various reasons, and so, they have been rebudgeted, and what we're doing is finalizing this for the Otter's Authority, that we can transfer that to reserve, 'cause we've budgeted from reserve in 2020 to undertake those projects. So, the far right column, the 2020 project amount from reserve, these are projects that we've learned that we've missed, or for various reasons, that we have, have to re-budget here, and they weren't included in the 2020 budget. For example, I would, I would, I'd point out, the, the last item on this list is the purchase of the two roll-off tandems of 880,000. Right up to the end of December, we were under the understanding that those two vehicles would be in our possession by the end of the year. They, we received them on, on January 28th, I believe. So, just to go back to that, we issued a tender on those back in December 21st, 2018, was awarded on January 28th, 2019. The two regular tandems arrived in November of 2019, and like I said, the two roll-offs just arrived on January 28th, and we didn't catch that in the budget, that we assumed they were going to be here, and we missed that. So, but, and so, most of these projects have been rebudgeted, and so, this is taxation money on that, that first major column that we're asking to move to fund those projects as, as we've budgeted. The page eighty-four is the reserve, or donations, I said, we've received that have been requested for specific purposes. Significant here, as you'll see, under Rockwood Terrace Long-Term Care Redevelopment, we've had an estate that has provided $300,000 for the redevelopment of Rockwood Terrace. So, that's quite, and there's more funds from that estate yet to come. So, that's significant there. So, and then, under provincial-funded projects, where we've had provincial funding, and we thought we were going to have that completed in time. We have one project there at Gray Roots, the New Horizons for Seniors. There's $12,600 that we need to carry forward to 2020 to complete that work. And so, rushing through this report, that is where we're, where we're at. At the end of the third quarter, we were projecting about a $1.4 million surplus, so we're, we're down a little bit from that, and, but there's where we're at.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. On that, are there questions to that report with regards to, thanks for all the hard work there. Kevin, any questions to that? You guys really want to go home today, don't you? Seeing there's no other questions, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you, Kevin. So, then, our last one is the request from, lost my page here, from the Children's Billy? Oh, so Kevin, yes, okay. So, I need a mover and a second. I don't have that part in my agenda for some reason. So, what, so, so, do you need a motion on for that? Counselor Rob, okay, Counselor Robinson, do I have a second? Counselor Woodbury, okay. Kevin, the floor is yours.
Good morning, county council. I'm trying to make this quick, too, due to the weather, but I'm here to, today, to talk to you about response times for 2019. So, we have to report to the ministry by March 31st of 2020, our 2019 results. So, this report's for information, also direction to give that information to the ministry. Our service, paramedic service, we're committed to continuous improvements in the service. It can be reflected in our response times. They were developed in 2012, and we've done nothing but improve our expectations since that time, even with the setting of increased call volumes. We also, where we do determine the times and the percentiles, we keep to a ninetieth percentile, which is difficult at times, because you're, you're really truly talking of a nine times out of ten potential. If you look across the province, they're anywhere from where they set the direction up to sixty-fifth percentile and up. So, so, each year, we, it's generally in July, we come here and have a discussion about our response time targets, and then, we submit that plan to the ministry by the end of October for the next upcoming year. And like I said earlier, we developed these targets back in 2012, and we pretty much maintained them, other than in 2015, we actually made our response times, improved them. So, we have six targets we look at. The first one is how quickly we get a defibrillator to a patient's side, and typically, that's from paramedic services arriving, or fire departments, but it also is some of our public access defibrillator sites. That time is set by the, the ministry, and we set the percentile. Ours is at forty percent. The second one is a CTAS one patient. The ministry sets the eight-minute target, and we set that at sixty percent of the time. And the CTAS two, three, four, and five targets, we set the timeframe, and we also set the percentile. So, what is CTAS? It's really a acuity scale of how bad or the, or the condition of the patient. It helps us, you know, talk in the same language when we talk to the hospital about the severity of the patients. So, it goes in a scale of CTAS one to CTAS five.